Maybe it was. Not that anybody wants to see this.
You're unmuted.
I have all the order, the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for August fifth, two thousand and twenty four at six thirty P M. Thank you, everybody online for joining us.
Wait, in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
In the minutes, I'd like to move that we add one item.
The H vac maintenance bids to new business under ten C. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we need to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which are very short. So I'd like your motion to approve the minutes of July sixteen.
I'll make motion with three minutes of July sixteen.
I'll second that, any discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Present to speak, public participation is encouraged, speakers are limited by appropriateness, staying on topic and maintaining decorum. Time may be limited to maintain progress. Please request a reserved time during the meeting if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item. Is there anybody online that would like to speak? Mister Marshall.
Hi, guys, good evening, James Marshall, Fisher Hill Road, uh, two quick items first being there was um a bunch of talk, uh, through a post on social media about the property to the south of Station two thirteen, the barn, um, and its status of potentially being demolished, um, it sounds like, um, through conversations with the selectman's office, that property, you know, that he's working with them to save that property, which is great, um, everybody falls on tough times, so, um, you know, I do hope that it's nice to hear that you guys are working on a plan to help, um, to help out with the back taxes on that. I was hoping you could speak a little bit about what the status of it is and how that's going and just also confirm that, you know, we are still pursuing some plan for collection ultimately, um, you know, assistance is one thing, but forgiveness, complete forgiveness is another, so just hoping you could speak to that. Um, the other item is related to the emergency, uh, the issues of Station thirteen and the Emergency Services Facilities Building Committee, um. Just speaking briefly on that, I am pleased to hear that it looks like we are very proactively trying to make some headway on, um, finally resolving some of the issues over at Station thirteen, um, so that we can work to resolve the underlying cause of the moisture that is now causing mold yet again. Um, with that said, though, I am remarkably frustrated, um, that over sixteen months, we still haven't done anything to address the cause of the underlying concern, and now at the cost of likely significant expense for the tax fare to abate again, um, and or do perhaps more comprehensive renovations than would otherwise have been necessary in the interim. Um, this has been going on for a year and a half, um, on or about, and it is, as somebody who's been a part of that conversation across a couple of boards now, um, it is remarkably frustrating to see that. Um, I also, the last couple of meetings, both at Board of Finance, the Emergency Services Facilities Building Committee, and I believe this board, there's been a lot of confusion about funding and sources of funding, um, specifically directed to that committee, um, and it's of my opinion, that is pretty clear that that work was for a comprehensive plan for to identify all of the needs and associated costs. The town is looking ahead at related to both fire departments, including the immediate needs of Station thirteen. Um, to date, nothing's been done with the exception of scoping the line out, um, in all fairness, I know it's not the committees, for some reason, I don't get why that conversation or why that direction hasn't been related to the committee, um. You know, they seem focused strictly on on the repair costs for Station thirteen, but it's very clear in the charge that the point of the committee is to create a comprehensive plan so that we don't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars here, hundreds of thousands of dollars there on a fire sale. Um, you know, jumping from urgent crisis to urgent crisis because we haven't done a comprehensive plan. Um, it's, it's, it's just very frustrating, and I don't think it's too much to ask, um, for the fire departments to come up with a comprehensive plan before we spend boatloads of money on a project, on a property that we may or may not, that nobody knows at this point whether is viable long term or even desired by both departments long term because there isn't a comprehensive plan. So I really hope that these boards can continue to work together to move the entire study effort along more rapidly, um, preferably so that we don't spend any money on Station thirteen, that won't be, that'll be wasted, um, in the long run. So thank you, guys, for all your efforts.
Thank you, Jim. As far as the River Road property, uh, part of the problem there was, was the, um, problem hit Facebook before anybody at the Town Hall was notified or made aware. Uh, we've been aware of that property for four years, and yes, we do intend to, uh, uh, collect a hundred percent of back tax at this point. Uh, so anybody else? Seeing no hands raised? Correspondence? Um, the only correspondence we have is a, is a letter that I, I wrote to the, uh, well, I signed uh, to, uh, the mayor of the town of Putnam and, uh, their Public Works Director. Uh, as Mister Marshall said, they, they came out, tried to scope our drainage problem in Station thirteen. Uh, there was so much gravel in the pipe that they couldn't get the camera in, so they came with their truck and, uh, jetted it out. They got in a hundred and twenty-six feet and hit something, so we will be investigating that as soon as we can. But, uh, they brought out a lot of equipment and a lot of manpower at no cost to our town, and, uh, for that, we thank them immensely. I, I believe in in inter-town help. Um, tax refunds. I haven't, so I'll read it. Um, I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of seven dollars and seven cents to be made to uh, Sheila Sour, the state of Janisour, um, under preventive, um, under the provisions of section twelve dash one twenty-nine, refund of excessive payments. That's it, the standard motion, I'll second that. Uh, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? I'm sorry, did you want me to tell you who was seconding or? I'm just hoping fair, yeah. Uh, Public Works report. It's been a very long day. Um, Public Works has done some roadside, more roadside mowing, from what I understand, there's, that's being held up by a major, uh, hydraulic blowout that they're trying, that they're repairing now. Uh, they've been working on vehicle repair and maintenance, roadside washout paving. They've been chipping brush from storm damage, and in conjunction with that, they built a new chip box for one of the back, back of one of their trucks so they can catch the chips. Uh, they swept, swept the chip sealed roads. Uh, and, uh, this is good. What's, I, I, there's gotta be a word for this. Um, at the request of the Conservation Commission and myself, uh, they put in, uh, new signs for the, to, to mark the trails and, and, uh, try to reduce the no, uh, illegal parking on Mason Road. Uh, they did a nice job on that. They, uh, worked with the, our guys worked with the, the Putnam people, uh, trying to get that external building drained. Uh, so they, they fixed one at DPW as well as working on the one for Wellington one. And, uh, they installed new shelving for the registrar's office, the registrar's office needed some additional help because of early voting. Um, and the DPW stepped up and did that. Um,
On, on the, on the, uh, the Public Works Report, uh, this is probably the only place where we're gonna talk about that. Um, voting, early voting, early voting is on Republican Senate primary, right?
Yes, I was gonna talk about that during the first election status report.
That's all right. All right.
Um, we did not receive a state police report for this month. So we have no report. Uh, first election status report. What is going on in town? Um, there's a state bid there, an approved state vendor for phones, so I'm looking to see whether we can change our phones from our current system to a, a voice over I P system. Whether it would make sense dollars wise and, uh, whether we could get, uh, upgraded service. If we stay with our current service, there's a major hardware, software update that's gonna be necessary in the next year. So I, I'm looking into that carefully to see if there's a long-term savings with, with voice. Um, at several meetings, it's been mentioned that, uh, we need to, uh, we would like to improve our our, uh, meeting moderators and their, their ability to do their job and get more people trained because this town depends on a town meeting and townspeople to run that meeting. And if there are people that are interested, whether we could get them some training. I've checked into two departments at Yukon and have so far not been able to find that, but, uh, I went up there again today and, uh, couldn't find parking anywhere near where I needed to go, so that didn't get done.
I need you for doing that, we had a couple people, um, talk about that, public and present to speak for the meeting, then we did mention that.
Yeah.
Um, when I brought this up and asked people to put it on the agenda, um, for the Board of Selectmen, uh, you know, my intent was not to, to my intent was to recruit volunteers, um, and have them trained on the proper way to go about, uh, facilitating town meetings, this is the crux of our government. That's the legislative body for our town, it's really, really important. And we need to be able to trust that people that do this kind of, then have some kind of background that can be remain independent and remain unbiased and remain and not talk about the issues at all. Just moderate the meeting, that's all. So at, in, in that time period when we had that President speak, so it means we need to pay people, you know, paying people to do this, I don't think that's necessary. I think there's enough goodwill out in, in public to be able to have people volunteer to participate. Um, if I wasn't a member of the Board of Selectmen, I would volunteer and participate, um, I don't know if people would vote for me, but I would do it. Um, so I think it's a great idea, and thank you very much for moving forward on that, Pete.
I, I'm still trying to get something done, I, I, I haven't dropped the ball on that yet, I, I plan on following up as much as I can. They may need to develop a course, I talked to the Communications Department. And the person I talked to there, I thought that was a great idea, but she was not in a position to initiate such a thing because right, you know.
I would suggest that, though, we do have people that are people like us that are trained in the event that no one show, you know, if you, just like you're at Sabishio Member of other commissions and stuff, you kind of need that as the full, you know, call us full timers, for lack of a better term, but, you know, it's easy to say, oh, yeah, you volunteer, then you can't make it, and then, then also we don't have a moderator, and we, I think you're absolutely right, people should be trained.
And my guess.
We should all probably be trained, sort of like, train the trainer almost.
Yeah, exactly.
And then at least we could step in if we have to.
Well, I don't, I don't, well, we're meeting with, so.
I, I like that, I, I agree completely.
Good, that's all.
And it's my guess that if we're having this issue, we're not the only town having this issue. And if we could get somebody like Yukon to put on a, a, an adult ed course or seminar in this, there might be a lot of people in, in surrounding towns that might be interested.
Well, that's C P P, that allows them to do other C M, C C M, C C M, man, it's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't, they don't, we checked into that, they don't.
Around it, that I don't agree.
I scoured their website, they had nothing.
Oh, that would seem to be that that would be a problem in all the towns that have this form of government.
Yeah.
Many of them in the region.
I mean, then even Connecticut. All right, thanks, Pete.
Um, interesting, the C E N contract, the Connecticut Education Network, they're the people that run our fiber optics to the building, that contract has been signed, so we should be able to take out the uh, failure point where we're microwaving between buildings and run fibers directly across.
Okay.
Uh, at their suggestion, I am now looking into fiber to the, um, DPW garage, and if we can get it down to there along with, uh, voice, uh, over I P phones down there, we may be able to save as much as two hundred and fifty bucks a month. But we gotta get that figured out, and it's gonna take some legwork, but I, I'm looking into that. Um, let's see, what else, um, our fuel prices, and we were, uh, Donna's been working uh, getting bids on fuel prices for the town diesel and propane, and she is locked in prices that are below this year's prices. Right, like seventeen cents a gallon less, so I, I was, that's what I said.
Yeah.
And I will pass on that to Donna.
Yes.
The website. Uh, I, this came up. I can't remember the, the term, it was a nonsense word that made no sense to me, but we need to upgrade something in our system. There is also the opportunity to upgrade the look and functionality of the system through the same people. And so I am going to refer her to you and Ralph, so you can take a look at this, there, there's some towns that have already gone to the new system, so you can get a look at it. Uh, one of the functionalities that they're looking at with the new website is that you can get to anything in two clicks, I believe, this is their goal.
That's the current goal of where you know about these things.
Right.
To play rather than going deeper and deeper.
Deeper and deeper, yes, so that, that's, uh, something that we need to look into because there's gonna be an upgrade one way or another, and uh, we pay a significant amount for a web presence for the town.
How much do you pay?
I, I don't know, it's, it was more than I expected when she gave me the number, but she was giving me a guesstimate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, that's something else we need to look into, however, I believe by law, we are requested to have a web, required to have a web presence, particularly for legal notifications.
Yeah, I don't think we should really close it down.
No, yeah, we could save money, but in the long run, it's not a good idea.
Right.
Um, town property, uh, line crossing, uh, I brought us a, um, show and tell for you guys, so as you know, we are using steep money to put a septic system in at the, uh, Town Hall.
Yes.
Uh, but because the building and the green sit on two separate pieces of the property, both owned by the town.
Yes.
Uh, the state is, or the health district is requiring that we get a easement from ourselves to pump our septic on our land. Uh, but the easement requires the legal definition of the land as it's written in the land records. However, it was last written in the land records in seventeen eighty, I believe, and that's them. So if, if anybody can translate that for us, we may be good. We're working with the legal department to see if we can uh, say, yeah, seventeen eighty, we've owned it a long time, we're not planning on selling it.
There's no mortgage.
There's no mortgage, um, and, and, and the, the, uh, title, uh, the, the deed search probably is not gonna turn up a lot.
Well, yeah, it came in the one, um, so, uh.
Okay. So we're still working on that legal.
Should this dealer refer to the record, that's all, not to say what's in it.
Well, I don't know, that's, that's, that's the legal question is, can we just refer to the record?
Right.
So that is being considered even as we speak.
Funny.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's in.
I think like five words of it.
That's in volume three of our land records.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Volume three.
Somebody had much nicer handwriting than I've ever had, or prettier, I don't know.
And to think they don't even curse somebody.
Right.
That was written with a quilt.
But all right, right now, a, a first grader can keyboard a lot better than other people ever could.
Do I have this coming?
Sure can. Cause Shannon said she doesn't want it on her desk anymore.
I don't, you take it.
Uh, gotta think about trees here. Trees are coming down, uh, on both sides of all the main arteries, and, uh, hopefully that will help with our electrical, uh, sustainability. All right. And we talked about that, um.
Then, are you at the end of the first likely report?
Not quite, uh.
More stickies.
I made that note twice.
Speaking of trees coming down, if you notice, you had a chance to look at some of the old pictures of Wellington, the back there, they're cutting back all the trees, it's starting to look like some of the old pictures of Wellington, when you drive that old park.
The stone walls.
See the stone walls, everything's cut.
Yeah.
That is exactly how it looked in the twenties and stuff, if you look at the old.
So. Station thirteen, you, did you wanna talk about that, uh, jetting out those pipes, was that the topic you wanted to talk to?
No, I, I, I wanted to, under first selection report, there's some stuff, I mean, we're, we're gonna be having, I haven't mentioned the registrar's office.
Oh, yeah.
And encourage everyone to go all the way.
That's, that's, go both, two, two more. That's two more now.
Oh, I'm early.
That's fine, I, I'm almost there. Um, I, I wanted to mention that, uh, W T I C ten eighty A M came out last Friday and interviewed a number of our firefighters, myself, uh, Jeff Gordon and others to bring attention to our town, as did Channel Three, I wasn't expecting them there, uh, the fire departments did an excellent job at putting together pancake breakfast, I, I.
Thank you.
It was outstanding, and, uh, they had, uh, one guy from each department making pancakes, doodling pancakes, and they were equally good. Um, the, we've lost contact with our animal control officer because apparently her phone died, so we've, uh, changed that out, uh, Horizon was able to get us involved for. Uh, we are going to be talking about regionalization this Thursday. Uh, I'm meeting with Mike Damato and, uh, Brian Foley from Talon. Uh, one of our issues is we have an animal control facility, but they've changed the requirements for minimums, and the last guess I heard was a hundred thousand dollars to bring our, our facility up to standard. And that's a, a, the state will shut us down if we don't come up with that standard. That's a state mandated standard, uh, through the Department of Agriculture.
Will they make more money available to do that?
Uh, that would be no. Um, the town of, uh, uh, Talon is having the same problem, and, and so they're writing a grant or grants to build a new facility. And, uh, that's why we're talking about regionalization, because if we both write that grant for the same building, then for hopefully less than a hundred thousand dollars, we can go in with a new building with them. And we have a part-time A C O now that's costing us about, I had it written down someplace, about eight hundred dollars. Uh, a pay period, about twenty thousand dollars a year. The problem with having a part-time A C O and a full-time building is that somebody's gotta keep going in to feed those dogs if we have, or if we're holding an animal there, and also if you're not there, even if there's not dogs there, then you, the, the supplies like dog food attract rodents, and so you end up with a problem on that, which we recently had a very large problem with that in that building. Plus, you have to heat it and cool it at three sixty-five, and so it's, it's expensive to run that facility. And we've been very fortunate over the years to have volunteers come in and help us, but I don't think that's that's the way we wanna count on it, so if we had a facility that we regionalize that where right, we could both put in what it takes to keep that building open.
Right.
It would probably save us a lot in the long run. And so, particularly when it comes to vehicles, maintenance, on and off.
Wouldn't we share our animal control officer with them?
Stafford.
Is there an opportunity to change to, to?
Oh, I met with, uh, both Bill Morrison from Stafford and Brian Foley from Talon at the same time to bring this subject up to see if we could go into a three-town regional.
Yeah, and that turned on.
Uh, we're still discussing.
And talks.
There's talks.
Right.
You know, lunch had to be eaten as well, so. Um, so that's the A C O and their phone and regionalization, and now, early voting.
Oh. Third time's a charm.
Third time's a charm.
Yes, uh, just.
We, we are currently in early voting for the Republican uh, U S Senate primary between
Two guys.
Two guys.
I went today, and I'd like to report to everyone that the, the registrars are very, very happy that someone showed up. Um, I, I was the first voter, um, and, uh, and they're very wonderful people, and if you wanna make them excited and happy, have a nice time, go do that.
So our count is now up to one, which means that we can do the math on the cost per vote for this.
Oh, no, you're not, I, I, I'm not.
We're gonna tie by one.
Bearing that cost.
Oh, it's you.
Oh, no.
You're it today.
Uh, then it, it is for registered Republicans only.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's from today through, um, Sunday, they will be voting on Saturday and Sunday.
And then it's, uh, the whole thing.
That, yeah, this is not the presidential election.
And then
then Tuesday is the, the primary.
That's, that's quite an expense, I mean, it's a big, big expense for us.
Yes, it is. And, uh, I have mentioned that to our representatives and to the Secretary of State.
Mm-hmm. Uh, so, uh, the other thing, I just wanted to briefly touch on what is like, uh, storm, we have a storm coming up on our, on our selectmen's report.
Yes.
Is there anything we need to talk about having to do with that, Pete?
Uh, I have that information here someplace, actually.
Oh, all right, cool.
I, I was gonna forget it until you just mentioned it, so.
That's it, I'm not friendly.
Right, yeah. The updated today. So it looks like Storm Daddy is coming up the Florida Panhandle, straight up the coast. Our primary hazards right now are heavy downpours, um, and some urban flooding. Uh, the map here says the heated, we had a heat advisory for today. Uh, it's hot and humid, if you haven't been outdoors. We are in a marginal risk of severe thunderstorms on, uh, Tuesday night into Wednesday. Uh, rainfall over the next six days could be as much as five inches. They're forecasting five to nine inches of rain, and, uh, they will be updating us again tomorrow. And if you would like to see the report, I will willingly give it to you.
Thanks, Pete.
You're most welcome.
And I can say that that storm is very active in Florida, you know, my daughter is in Orlando and went to Disney today and got refreshed.
I'm sure. Um, so I think that's all I have for that, do we have the dates for the reappointments?
I put it on here.
Probably in the folder, the, right here.
I put it on the, on your, um, agenda, I think. I think I just wrote it on yours.
Oh. Ah, you did. So. We need to reappoint for the inland wetlands water course commission. The IWWC. So I will move that we reappoint Dave Jordan. For a period. For a term from, uh, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, to August fifteenth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, the only discussion is that Dave Jordan has been serving on these town committees for a very long time, we are, the town is incredibly lucky to have. Here, no further discussion, all in favor, aye? I move that we reappoint Mark Grove. Trump, drop me. From August tenth, twenty twenty-four to August fifteenth, and I'm sorry, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. August fifteenth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Do we know, you know Mark? I do. Probably he's, he live on the highest point one thing.
Well, and he's out of the water.
But he knows water.
Alright.
Smart guy. Lucky to have him.
Very good. All in favor, aye? I, we've got, uh. Jimmy here. To explain this. But the Wellington Parks and Recreation Commissioner and the Director of Parks and Recreation. Recommended the Board of Selectmen award the contract for the River Road Athletic Complex. Drainage project to Earth Dynamics LLC for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh. Before I I I let Jimmy speak, uh. From what I understand, there was only one bid, even though it was put out the bid. Uh, and this is an ARPA project. Uh. What I'm gonna ask tonight is that. Uh. We vote to allow me to sign it once it clears. Uh, legal. It's at the lawyers now and they weren't able to complete it for tonight, but it should be within the next couple days.
Please submit a draft to them, they're making.
Yeah, they they've got, they've got our, our. Binge, uh. Outline and the bid, uh, back from Earth Dynamics, so they're looking over all of that. Now, Jimmy, so.
Hello, everyone, uh, just a little background on the project, it is an ARPA project, ARPA seventeen and eighteen, uh, two hundred. Twenty thousand dollars was appropriated, uh, back in twenty twenty-two. Um, the work that's gonna be done, um, the work encompasses the regrading of the southerly portion of the River River Road Athletic Complex. Um, basically from the basketball court all the way to the, um. Workout station on that southern portion, um, temporarily remove and reset the various field equipment and facilities over there. Um, in that location, installation of new underdrains, reconstruction of the existing walking path. Um, in that area, removal of existing and installation of a new chain link fence along the south end of the field. Uh, removing the existing and installing a new wooden guard rail, which is the parking lot fence. Um. Over there along. Along the existing access road and edge of the field. Um, installation of new field lighting and accessory underground conduits. Um, and replacement of existing electrical box, of the existing electrical boxes over there, I'm a. I believe there's some plans in over there that you have and they are, um, you can see where the new. Field lighting is going, it's gonna be on the far side of the walking path, which is. Completely in the dark, if you're attempting to go walk at night over there, so that would be a huge bonus, um, for people who like to. Go out, walk at night and the new underdrains will very much help the drainage, which has been eroding the walking path, just. By the way that it currently is.
Is is there plans to turn out the lights at night so we don't get too much light pollution after a certain time?
So right now, the main ones, um, that we turn off are the basketball, um, and the playground lights, those are set ten PM, I believe. Um, and we will make sure that, um. Those ones turn off too.
Is there, uh? Well, sometimes they call clerk of the works, is there anyone that is, this is probably doesn't fall under the building inspector? Is there anybody that will be inspecting the work? Make sure it's in accordance with the plans as in.
So we have Carl, Carl asked him over, um, the engineer, he put the plans together, he's he's still involved in the process.
I mean, cause those things happen very quickly.
Yeah.
So you say, oh, gosh, it's all done, we didn't see, and once you. Do stuff underground, if it's covered up too fast, I'm just, it's it's worth. Checking, yeah, just to make sure that people are doing things in accordance with the plan. So Carl's gonna be, uh, in fact, of course, the works.
And then, um, there is a provision in the contract that I have to get the exact words, but for meetings with me, um, as the project goes along too.
And don't be afraid to tell them if they're not doing it right. Also, don't be afraid to call Troy and get him to come down and look in the ditch.
Yeah, is any question? Once it's, once it's in the ground, you can't really change it.
Troy, oh, yes. Yeah, I have no, no doubt in Troy's ability to look in a ditch and go, yep, that's a ditch. So. We have a motion and a second correction.
I don't, did we?
Uh, I don't know, no, I think we're.
You made a motion, there's no second.
Okay. We have a second.
My only one bidder. The money wasn't that good, or it was too cheap, too low?
Yeah, I have a question to follow up on that too, but.
Go ahead.
I don't know.
I don't have the answer.
It seems like this happens. I mean, I, this is not the first time I've heard one bidder, so.
It happens a lot, we tried to get a bid, I don't wanna.
I don't understand why, for different reasons, you get one response.
I know.
And the other people don't respond forever, I don't know. Furnaces at the firehouse, they only got one response and they went and they. Begged people to at least put in a bid. And somebody said, yeah, I don't want the job, so I will bid six times whatever you're, you think it's worth and. Just so, so then you can have a bid.
This doesn't have to do with a specific one.
Yeah, we did have a a second contractor attend a pre-bid meeting and we never got anything else.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what to do.
Earth Dynamics is a pretty big company out of Mansfield.
Yeah, yeah, I I know the name, I don't know, I assume their trucks are.
Yeah.
Well, if they feel they can do it for that money, you need the specifications.
I mean, we're a small town, we don't have a purchasing manager, a purchasing director.
Right. No, we we. We run by the department, a lot of times it's it's through and gone. For the public work stuff, it's through Heather.
Yeah. I mean, when you're talking to the rest of the people like over town in different places, like, you know, you gotta be into other person.
Uh, not as often as I would hope.
But what do you do, maybe you could ask Mike.
Are you having trouble?
So that that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
I don't, but I don't think it's any different in the pri- in the private sector, having to try to find contractors to go out and do major work. It's hard to get them to get back to you. It's very hard to get commitments.
Right.
I don't suppose it's any different for municipal.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's not us.
No, I don't, I'm not. I don't think it's us. Oh, oh, I had one more, uh, so, let's stick with this for just a second, get into this.
We need, we need a second.
Yeah, do we need, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion that we, uh, award the contract, uh.
No, no, that that we we authorized me to.
To do the, uh, for doing it's dynamics, I would second that.
Yeah, I think, um, so what we're saying is, you, uh, there's a letter out there, it's gone to legal to get approved.
Right.
Provided there's no changes to it.
Yes.
They're approved, or.
The board is.
The board, board allowed it, it authorized me to sign that. Okay.
Let me call over.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Going back one step because I forgot it. And I apologize to, uh. Status report. We are still currently looking into the water contract with Wellington Woods. Because septic is now part of their contract. Uh, are, we want, they. It. Septic is a cost to the town of Wellington Woods, that's not part of the current water contract. Uh. We are looking into that as well. Uh. Based on. Uh. Information that I got from. Our business department. Had we been keeping up. Had they been paying full, full boat all the way through. We'd have an extra sixty-four thousand. So, I I am, I am following up on this so that we don't continue to fall behind. This year alone, it was five thousand dollars, they used more than. Uh. I think, I think it was five thousand. That, uh. More than. They paid us because they they're they're still operating under the current contract. Even though the contract says you can update it every five years, hasn't been, so. I'm still following up on that. Um. And and it turns out that septic's important.
Yeah.
When the pumps failed, it 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 got busy in a hurry down there. Uh. So, now moving on to ten C. Uh. We have for the past five years had a, uh, contract for our. Uh, HVAC. Uh, maintenance contracts. We recently went back out to bid. And we've got two bidders.
Hey.
There we go. Uh, twice as many as you guys. From, uh, Energy Unlimited. And they gave us a quote for, uh, five thousand four hundred dollars. And, uh, Homestead, which is, um, much more complicated quote. They have quotes per hour to come out, but it's. Essentially fifteen hundred dollars base plus. Uh, call out time, uh, both these companies have been. Used by the town in the past. I know Homestead is the one that's been dealing with the fire department. Energy Unlimited is the ones that put in our, our air conditioner for the. Uh, main room upstairs and did one of our. Furnace replacements here. Both, both of them are very good, uh, uh. Uh. Companies. However, talking to Troy, who these quotes came into through Public Works. He is suggesting that we go with a, uh, with Homestead. Uh, because. It's a far more comprehensive quote, and he feels that it'll cost us less in the long run.
You know what's the number on the Homestead quote?
The Homestead quote is three thousand. Eight hundred thirty-five dollars in part of the. Per year. Plus. Plus call. And he feels that it would be a lot cheaper to go with, or not a lot cheaper. Somewhat cheaper to go with Homestead.
So you renew these with them?
Yes.
And then providing twenty-four seven, that that would be out of twenty-four seven, I will be sold here. No.
Um, we'll get this one back. I should have printed out any comments, you guys.
That's been a little more comprehensive, has a lot more detail.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, maybe they know the town a little better, capped at twenty, about twenty-five hundred dollars difference. Between the two beds, but one.
And I think these are most.
Is, is, uh. Her visit.
Right.
This, apparently isn't, is that right?
I. Wish I could answer that.
Sorry, I apologize. Right, of course, parts would be extra on either. No, this is the same thing.
Yeah, alright. Yep.
Okay, I haven't even mentioned anything.
Alright, so, I move that we award the contract to Homestead.
No one has it now?
Uh. I can't remember. No, we weren't happy with it.
You weren't, okay, so they're, yeah, uh, between Troy and and the, uh.
People over at the senior center and a number of other issues will be bad, we. It was time to drop the bit.
Perfect. So we have, I think we made a motion, do we have a second, I'll I'll second it, okay.
Any other discussion, all in favor, alright?
Alright.
Alright. Uh, that takes care of new business, old business. Uh, the Emergency Services Facilities Building Committee, I believe we've been going over that, uh, they've got a. New issue where they, we do not currently. We cannot currently use Station Thirteen at all, even for equipment.
Right.
So what we need to do is, uh, speaking with, we had that, uh. Uh, special. Service, yeah, Service Master at the Special Board of Selectmen meeting last Thursday. And what I got out of it was that there's three things, you gotta get either rid of mold spore, which is in the air all the time.
Mm-hmm.
Or, uh. All the organics inside the building, or the water, and I think the only one we have any real control over is the water.
Like, get rid of, it could be, I'd like to speak to that, I, I was, several people have mentioned that we've known about this for sixteen months. I'd like to sort of temper that a little bit, that we didn't know the extent of it. Sixteen months, we held, we held a board of selectmen meeting in that building.
Right.
In the fall, that it doesn't, it did not seem that the mold issue was as great as it was. And the fact that all, most of the stuff got moved out of there, which would have, you think would have kept the mold down.
Yeah.
I I think, you know, reasonable people felt that it was not going to get worse.
Right.
And now, you know, we, we did form the committee, yeah, you know, we were elected in November. And now we are, you know, we're seven months into it, and progress is being made, and then sure, it would be nice if it wouldn't be more, more rapid. But the fact that the, and this is, this, I'm not, I, the the committee as a group. Uh, felt that regardless of what the charge was, overall to analyze the facilities. Um, to, um. Maintain and and and, you know, uh, emergency services of the town. So that first analysis became the fact that, well, we have to do something about Station Thirteen. In order to maintain the current level of service, so that became sort of the overarching. Charge, and that is job one on the charge was. Making service, you know, so. Regardless of, yes, we want to get into analysis, and we don't ever ignore that, it's always on our new business plan. Um, but the, we had to, we we felt, meaning we have to react to this, uh. To the potential lack of service, and I know, uh, I. From my understanding from the Emergency Services Staff Personnel, they're severely impacted by this lack of the station. Right now, they're, I mean, in their minds, they can't provide service, you know, north of, in the northern part of town. Now, yes, service will be provided, but it will be delayed, I mean, there's no question it will be delayed.
That's not a, not a good situation.
I can certainly understand that, you know, residents may be frustrated about the speed. But, again, twenty thousand dollars was allocated for analysis. Okay, that's great, but I really think now two hundred thousand dollars needs to be, some of that money really needs to be allocated towards fixing this. This, this, well, is a critical, maybe that's too strong a word, but it's vital, and I think that that's something that. And that's something that we're actively talking.
Right.
Um. So, yeah, I'm sorry, I can understand that it's frustrating to watch, but it is kind of a slow process, and it is new spot, you know, these are new. Events keep popping up, like now, we can't put anything in there. We were thinking, oh, we should be able to just make it into a garage, two, three weeks ago. That is what, that was what the indication was based on the last mold study, the new one comes out and it's worse. We are actively looking at drainage, we're actively looking at, but we all know the complexities of.
So.
Private land, town work, and it gets a little messy.
We should be, uh, starting excavation on Wednesday.
To to alleviate some of the frustration that townspeople might feel, progress is being made, and it is a slow grind. But it isn't like nothing's happening, so, and the problems are being addressed, and do the best. Of the ability based on the land that is there, you know, we have to work within, though, that construct. And I think, I think things like, you know, you and Troy are getting right on it and. They're, you know, getting the pipe cleaned out, all that stuff.
Just to underline here, so they're, they're all gonna be there on Wednesday, beginning the installation.
In private weather.
No, they're, they're not gonna be. They're gonna be finding the pipe, finding where where the problem is. As, as, as I understand it, and. I'm, I'm always open to correction, but. I'm, I'm always open to correction, that the as-built plans for that building. May or may not be what's actually in the ground. And until we look, we won't. And. No, for sure. Uh. Willington Fire. I don't know who that is.
It, it's Alex. For whatever reason, it comes up as Willington Fire.
Go ahead.
Um, real quick, just, so yes, Wednesday, we're gonna try to find that pipe. Uh, and hopefully a storm drain in that area. Uh, Thursday night, anybody that's available to be at the building committee meeting, we are gonna discuss the. Uh, I brought up last meeting, the temporary firehouse um in the residence there. Should be a good discussion if anybody's available to attend that.
Thank you. Okay. So we are working hard. We are making, we are making.
I think we're making progress and. And, you know, there's nine years of experience with municipalities, this one, it takes time. There's a lot of different people in the. Lot of committees that are, you know, filled with very earnest people that. Uh, when we respect their opinions and it, just is, that's how the process is, a lot of checks and balances, they need to be there. It just, it absolutely slows things down. You don't just whip out your credit card and say, let's put in a drink, it says that, you know, you don't sell. So it takes a little time.
Alright. Um, moving on. Um. The multi-jurisdictional shelter agreement with uh Mansfield, Coventry and Ashford. We are still waiting for Demus to come by. I thought that this was a, a form that they just wanted me to sign and mail to them, but they do not. They wanna stop by and make sure I sign it.
Ah.
Um.
What's it?
Wet signature and this is, uh. We're the last town to sign it, so.
And we had, we talked previously about Stuart coming to the Board of Selectmen to let us know about. The agreement, um, what, and what the costs are. What, what impact?
The, the, there is some cost to it. However, we do have money, uh, or we've budgeted. Funds to run that shelter.
Oh, we did.
Oh, yes, it's our, and, and, and what they do is they, they put it into a savings, some into a savings account every year. And so that if we need to open that, we can. The problem we're gonna ru- run into with this is. Uh, we're also required to provide uh manpower to, to staff it. Uh, which is gonna be an issue. Um. Recently, I've been, I got a, uh, something, email. Notice from, from, uh. Uh, Demus. Are saying that they've got a course. For people that want to train people to be on SERP teams, the civilian emergency response teams.
Right.
Uh. As I understand it, once again, open to correction, we had a SERP team. And at one point, and then our SERP team was regionalized. And then our SERP team, I think it was near the beginning COVID. Dissolved because they couldn't meet, they couldn't train, they didn't know who was. Going where, they had all kinds of issues.
Hmm.
And I've got the very bare bones of a, an outline on my board on where I'd like to go with that. And we, the problem with it is it's an all volunteer organization and what you're asking people to do is come out. At the worst times.
Yeah.
To, to volunteer, to help other people. And they're suggesting that it not be fire personnel on this team. Because at those times, they would, they were busy doing fire stuff.
They're the very ones that are.
So, right.
That makes sense.
I, I. Need to figure out how to start recruiting for this and who the correct people are. And it's gonna need some leadership. And uh, we're gonna need some dedicated people.
Melissa commented, said last time it was you SERP volunteered, I was there as a SERP team member too.
Alright.
So Melissa McKinnon might be someone to reach out to.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Melissa.
She's jargon. He spoke up.
Well done, Melissa, well done.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's that.
I mean, one of the things that concern me, but I read that, that plan and, and the Demus document and that. They're wanting us to provide police services. And, I think, employees. And I don't know, and that's what it sounded like to me.
Yeah, but here's the other thing is we're required to have a shelter plan.
Okay.
So we can do it all on our own.
Right.
Which would be even worse. So that's, you're between a rock and a hard place, the best thing to do is dodge.
How do you incentivize people to, to make them, not make them, but compel them to resent them, to be. Interested in this?
I don't know.
I don't either. I don't know either. It's a, we talk about that, about fire alarms, volunteerism is dropping everywhere. So how do you get people to wanna be on a SERP team, wanna be on a. On the uh multi-juris- jurisdictional shelter team, I mean, what? How, what can you possibly do? I don't know the answer to that.
It's, it's a shame because at one time, I think, I mean, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but at one time, families had time. To do that. They had time to volunteer. And they don't, they don't really have time to volunteer anymore. I look at my own life and I go, this is about all I can do. I'm on two boards, two boards in town. And it's like, I can't do anything else. Other people have it worse than I do.
Mm-hmm.
You know? Um. Anyway, we should, we should talk about that.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so that brings us back to President to speak. Thank you, Melissa. Oh, man, there came the boss.
Oh. I'm not touching that one.
We got the first two members of the SERP team.
Yeah, alright, so I see no hands raised, any hands in, oh, Willie gonna fire, go ahead. Alex.
Just real quick, um, we did it, or Troy was able to get a uh new CPR box or A D box installed at River Road Park last week. Parks and Rec is working on the electrician. So the big yellow box, as you drive by, you'll see a nice big yellow box now at River Road Park. Uh, so if somebody has a cardiac event, they can call nine one one, nine one one tells them how to get into it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I know that the, the fire department has been working on getting us. Uh, A D Ds everywhere and so, and thank you for, for, for maintaining those. I know it's not. Completely maintenance free. Okay, brings us to good and welfare. I'm good.
Not on welfare.
There we go. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I second that.
Hearing no comment, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.